Roll call.
Okay, Mayor Westergaard. Woltman.
Yep.
Muller.
Yes.
Reese.
Yeah.
Stankin.
Here.
I don't believe there's any public forum. We'll go to consent agenda.
Hey, just, yeah, one thing on the consent agenda I forgot to include on the actual fiscal agenda is the approval of the financial report. It's in the packet, but we would approve the financial report.
Make a motion to approve.
Roll call.
Woltman.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Muller.
Yes.
Okay, we'll have the budget requests. Looks like Eric, you can go.
Yep.
Library.
I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council for allowing this committee to have a budget request increase. The library's order of trustee is, we'd like to thank you for your support and submit to your increase requesting a 2.03% over last year's budget. We continue to meet the criteria to be the top third tier of libraries in Iowa. This entitles us to the maximum amount of the rich Iowa funds. We do average over 900 library visits per month. We have several programs which are still ongoing and very successful, which is the summer reading program and our very popular Monday after school program. There's also a couple of other things going on this past year. The library hosts an art class put on by Linda Drilling for both adults and youth, and we also have an adult coloring class. We have two new things this past year that have been very, very popular with the adults in town. The library continues to comply with the state requirements for certification by reading unstruckly the books and by completing an inventory of our collection. One of our primary goals is to encourage and enable people to read. Due to this, we offer many services such as eBooks, DVDs, large print books, newspapers, periodicals, and other sorts of information. We also offer internet access, which we have a Wi-Fi available to anybody that's outside there or in the building, in Lakeview, sit out on that bench or sit outside in the cars and use our Wi-Fi access all the time. So, thank you for your support of our library. We are an important community service that helps make life a great community. And thank you again from the Lakeview order of trustees.
Thank you, Eric.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you.
The library does a good job. Who is our housing trust fund?
Me.
You.
If you just take a look at page seven, it starts at page seven in your packet. Region 12 operates this housing trust fund. And what it does is assist low income and very low income people with different types of housing programs. So every year they get some grant money, I think it's federal or state grant money. And again, this year, they were awarded the $235,872 worth of grant money. Requires a 25% local match. And they have always went to all of the counties, county governments, and have been able to meet match requirements that way. And they will continue to do that. And each of the counties contributes $3,000. They need to come up with their 25% match, so they're asking the communities within their region to also provide some amount of match. And the requested amount is for $1,000. Just, as we were talking about this with the city managers group with Region 12, I said, you've got to show people what it is that they're doing with the money and where it is utilized. And that's the thing on page nine. And it shows how many projects have been done in each of the communities. And so from 14 to 16, you see that there was two projects done in Lakeview, and it invested $11,000 into the housing stock of Lakeview somehow. So, again, the request would be for $1,000.
What's the timeframe on this?
During next fiscal year.
So there's no hurry.
It's just a budget request again, so.
Okay, park board.
Okay, good evening. I'm Brett Muddenberg. I'm here on behalf of Lakeview Park Board to request a fund for Emerald F4 preparation plan. As we all know, the Emerald F4 is exotic tree pest, which is a direction city's 283 public ash trees. With each passing year, its presence continues to be confirmed in new counties. Since these announcements have been somewhat commonplace in longer here, or read much about it in the news or media, but it's important to remember that it is, the problem still exists, it has not gone away. The Emerald F4 preparation plan recommended by the Lakeview Park Board is a proactive plan which remains unaltered from previous years. It is based on two management tools. One, the reduction of ash trees, the ash tree population to a manageable, healthy stand. And two, the chemical treatment with systemic insecticide of healthy trees that are to remain standing. Our Emerald F4 preparation plan contains total estimated costs for tree removal and tree treatment. Currently, the cost for removal of an average-sized ash tree are estimated at about $500 to $600. That's average-sized tree, can vary greatly depending on the size of the tree, of course. Current estimated cost for chemically treating an average-sized tree run at $100 to $150. That chemical treatment must be performed once every two years with the current insecticide that are out there. Taking into account the number of public ash trees, our plan expects the combination of tree removal and chemical treatment to cost a city between $8,000 and $10,000 per year for a several-year period. To help spread out the costs, we again recommend the city to set aside a fund for ash tree treatment and removal to help us respond quickly when Emerald F4 is confirmed in the area. Currently, the closest Emerald F4 infestation, confirmed infestation that is, is roughly eight miles away in Boone, Iowa. And I included a map in the packet there. You'll see it, it has kind of all the confirmed infestations in Iowa, and where those circles are. Just kind of to give you a reference for how this progress is going, three years ago there was no confirmed areas west of I-80. As you can see, there's several now, so it's keeping closer each passing year. The good news is that the chemical treatment of ash trees does not need to begin until Emerald F4 is confirmed within a 15-mile radius of Lakeview. This gives us time to prepare for the arrival of Emerald F4. With appropriate budgeting and planning, we believe Lakeview can be prepared to meet the threat of Emerald F4, to disperse the costs associated with it over the years to come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brett.
Thanks, Brett.
Who's going to do the little hometown pride?
Brett.
Brett?
Yep, I am.
And community club also.
Oh.
Okay, on behalf of the hometown pride committee and park board, as you know, we have been planning the construction of a splash pad at Speaker Park. This project was first mentioned in a 2015 community-wide survey, where we received support among 75% of respondents. A splash pad can provide numerous benefits to Lakeview, including additional recreation activity for our youngest residents, alternative water play that is more economical than a pool or aquatic center, a unique attraction for campers and other guests who regularly visit our community. This past October, the city council approved the location of the splash pad in Speaker Park in the area north of the Pier 25 playland. The projected cost of a splash pad includes $45,110 in equipment. With plumbing, electrical work, and concrete installation, the total cost for the project is estimated at $120,000. To pay for this project, the committee has been planning fundraising activities. These include the community attraction and tourism grant from the Region 12 council governments, Iowa Network Services charity grant, corporate grants, cash raised through community-based fundraisers, pledges, and in-kind donations from private citizens. To boost our fundraising activity, committee is requesting $35,000 in cash, in-kind, or a combination of both from the city council. Currently, our committee has raised $10,866, raised in cash and pledges. That is, that amount is. In closing, our committee would like to express our gratitude for your past support and work towards what we believe will be a great asset for our community.
Thank you, Brett. Connie?
Ready for me? I'm asking on behalf of LVCC. We have a total this year of $9,000, which, it's all advertising, or for the most part it's all advertising. It's up a couple hundred from last year, which is just an increase in what the Western Iowa tourism advertising cost. And then half of, it also is, half of the cost of the two coordinators, both myself and Jennifer.
Thank you, Connie. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a little bit on that, you know, community club one, just that, so yeah, the total would be $9,000. We have financed that historically out of hotel motel tax. And I just want to show you real quickly, it's on page 15, what we utilize hotel motel tax revenues for. And when that was passed, you know, we said we were going to use it for a couple of things. And then we use it for debt service, to help pay for the cost of providing the infrastructure to the hotel site, and then also use things for community development. So, those are the end marketing, community development, marketing, and those were those uses that are there as far as we paid the community club out of it. We do also have an agreement with the Lakeview Motel that there basically reimbursed their taxes to, in a similar way to what, to how we use Boulder's taxes to pay that debt service. So that was just an equity thing between the two hotels. But as of the end of this upcoming year, it would be anticipated that there would have a balance of about $66,000, which would be available then for community development projects.
You said, and we've been using this one to help the community club?
Yeah, you know, basically, we pay debt service and we pay the community club, or the budget for the community club out of that. And that largely is it. We paid, I think, SETD dues out of that and something like that too, you know. But that was basically it.
Okay. Ordinance 480 is our second reading. Need a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
Roll call.
Muller.
Yes.
Woltman. Stankin.
Yes.
Reese.
Okay, ordinance 41 is our second reading of the garbage rates. Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Muller.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Woltman.
Yes.
And 1707 is our tax abatement?
It's a prior approval for Jim and Trudy Whitmack for their new home on North State Road.
Need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Muller.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Woltman.
Yes.
Kay, you have information on the copier lease?
I do. Our current copier lease expires in February this year. And so for the last month and a half, we've been taking proposals from office supply companies on new copy machines, or at least of a new copy machine, which be a five-year lease. So in the packet, there's a spreadsheet of the top three that we were looking at, plus the numbers for our current copy machine. We actually looked at several models from each company, but this is kind of what we've narrowed it down to. In looking through the numbers and in looking through the machines themselves, we are recommending to go with Access out of Fort Dodge and the Sharp 4070. Their price might be a little higher than the Conica to start with, but as you can see, it's a better machine. And the Conica copy costs are quite a bit higher than the Access copy cost, so if you look at your bottom line for total monthly cost, you'll see it's actually cheaper in the long run to go with the Conica, or to go with the Sharp. And you'll see clear on the right, our current copy costs are quite a bit higher because it's an older machine than what we would get out of a new lease.
What's this lease give you? Do they perform maintenance on it?
Yes, all maintenance and all supplies, except for paper and staples. So all the toner and all the maintenance. And then, of course, it comes with the setup and the networking for the four computers that use it.
So, well, they do have a rep that comes by when you need stuff, or how's that work?
Yeah, actually, you call in and they guarantee you a four-hour same-day tech to come out with that stuff. They say right now they're averaging 2.3 hours, but they do guarantee you a four-hour.
That's pretty common, that wasn't it?
Yeah, yeah, although one of the companies we did quote wouldn't guarantee anything because they're more in Nebraska and South Dakota, and so their techs are farther away. And they said they would do their best, but then they were one of the higher ones, so we really didn't look at them.
And you like it?
We have not seen it yet in person. This company has offered to bring it to us, hook everything up at no cost, let us try it for five days. If we like it, we'll keep it and start the lease. If we don't like it, they will take it away at no cost.
So is this the first one or the second one?
The second one.
The Access?
Yeah, from Access.
I'll make a motion, we accept the Access bid.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Just, I guess, just clarification on that, Dave. We're going to try this thing out first. If we don't like it, we're going to come back with something else. So if we can have that to accept the Access proposal, subject to trial, you know, however that's going to be.
Roll call.
All right. Woltman.
Yes.
Muller.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Thank you, Kay.
All right.
Okay, we're going, Bill's going to talk to us about the underground?
I feel so much smarter when I sit next to them.
You can feel the electricity.
I can feel it, exactly.
Guess I'll go over that project. That's on page 22, I think. I've said this before, I'm trying to get the whole town, do the people live in the red urban area, to get all the lines buried. The number five is Bob and Joyce Moore's house. It's right by the, on the highway by that. Bury their tap in, because right now it cuts across another person's private property, and this way here it would go straight on their property. Number nine is Stuart Bones. He's right across from Heartland Trucking. And then, if you remember last year, we came from Sparky's and stopped at Heartland Trucking. Well, now, I propose to continue on there from Sparky, I mean, from Heartland Trucking down to TCT Trucking. That's the number 19. Number 15, 15, 16, 25, and 26 is all series lighting. It's up in Kay's neighborhood, Jeff Ross, down to Lanny Staples, that whole circle area up to Design Circle is under series lighting. We've had a lot of problems with it.
Does that mean you're going to take out that one pole?
Taking that box out of your backyard, are you?
You could take that one pole with you.
But that's that area right there. 24 is from the old substation behind the bait shop that goes over to McClure Street by Dean Rains. That's a main loop feed we use to tie the east and west city together. 31 is down by Bob Manstee's and Bob Kelly's. Comes from Bob Kelly's transformer, and then from the six divers that go across the street to Bob Manstee's. And the final one is from Mary Ann Monroe's transformer to the end of the alley. If you see my main map, this is getting rid of all the old open consented wire, just as always.
Staying right close to budget, huh? That's kind of what we're doing.
We put on $8,000, but we're talking to Scott. We have saw cut payment and remove or replace concrete. I don't look for anything there, but we just put a number in there so if something happens, you've got a bid number there. And that brings the total to $79,767. And I bumped it up, so I'm looking at 40, hopefully to be even cheaper than that. It'll take a six-man crew probably a month.
What a perfect time to move that pole.
We'll put on the bids.
One more time, Dave.
Didn't hear it. I'd sure like to see that pole.
Well, he can put an extra one on my block, and once it's so dark.
All we need to do is move it.
Yeah, there you go.
So don't run into it.
So we're going to need a motion to send out bids if they want, or?
Yeah, that's, you know, that's basically where we'd be, is if you wanted to bid this thing, that we would, let's take a look real quick at, just at page 20, this goes through some of the things as far as what timeline's going to be, that we would take bids on this with bids due on February 16th. So we'd get bids out right away, and then they'd have about a month to get their bid ready. And receive them on the 16th, and then consider them at the city council meeting after that. Completion date's proposed to be August 1st, so it'd be a first half of the summer type of a project.
This is staying away from all of our street stuff this summer. We won't be anywhere close to the streets we're going.
No, we've got all those jobs done. I talked to Scott, just asked the council if they could, if you bid that Lake Shore Drive, and you could do it at a different time than our contractors in town, because we just don't have the manpower to do both jobs at the same time. I don't know how you can arrange that, but... Because last summer, we spent months out at East End moving wire and boxes and everything.
Eric, you moved to put that out for bid, right?
Yeah.
Roll call.
Okay, Reese.
Yes.
Woltman. Stankin.
Yes.
Muller.
Yes.
Okay, we'll go on to the truck. This replaces that 10-year-old one that Jeff drives.
How many, how many would you pick to respond to that? How many bids you think they'll get?
I think we had two last time.
We had two last time. Yeah, I tell you what, Sean's been real good with us, but we have trouble getting people to bid. And we had this company from Wisconsin bid us again, and it kind of looked like a courtesy bid, or a, you know, high bid where they wanted to make some money if they were going to get it.
We sent, I think we sent out four or five, at least five.
Oh, well, we have sent out 17 packets, you know, in the past, and struggled to get any of them returned.
Because it's a small project in their eyes?
It is, it is a small project in contractor's eyes. They're going after that huge job that takes no year, and... And I talked to contractors, and they have a hard time keeping employees too. It is.
Okay, on to the truck. 550, that's the one that'll pull the trailer bill?
Right, Jeff and, well, this was even back when Brian was here, we have a 350 now, single axle, and it just, we're overloading that truck with our rock trailer, our full trailer's 15,000 pounds, our rock trailer's, I think, 12,000, but it just, they would like to go to a larger body truck to handle that weight.
So you've got bids on that already?
It's on the page 24 trade side.
Page three.
And there are apples-to-apples bids, so...
Yeah, I know, yeah. Well, then, I think we ought to keep it in the county if we can.
I agree with you.
He won't bid it again if you do that.
No, no. We've had this before.
Really?
He was done that once before, and I had to beg him to give me a price.
We go to Storm Lake next time.
Well, what are you going to do if he's...
I mean, I'm just saying, if you don't take his little bid, he won't bid it again.
But we can get it anywhere we want, just take that chance. Whatever the council would like to do.
You know, I guess I'm always in favor of trying to do business at home. And if we could do that, so be it. And if we have to go elsewhere to get bids, then we go elsewhere, but...
You're creating a standard bill, not taking the low bids, is that?
That's like, what is it, 80 bucks?
15.
I had a file that was, you just dropped the stat.
95, 95 bucks.
Oh, it was 95, oh, it says, okay. Mine says 40.
But we've done this in the past, I can tell you, to get local, we've done it.
We have chosen to stay within the county in the past when the bids have been pretty close. And, no, we have made that decision. Just know that Carol won't be very happy about it.
Maybe you should bid loader.
He is low.
I would suggest if you're going to do that, just get the price from the county and...
So Dave, you wanted a motion to buy it from Beckman?
Yeah, I'll make that a motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Woltman.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Muller.
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Bill.
Thanks, you're welcome. A couple other things with the council, I could, John. Denver's got his Class ACL now, so he can drive all of our equipment and trailers. He's completed his second year of his journeyman program, so he's getting right on that. Our mean, our new substation metering is done by a cell phone, and they gave me the passwords, and I can see it with mine wherever I want to see the load, anything I want to know, I can see right there, wherever I'm standing. So that's really nice. I've wanted that for a long time, and they just gave it to us because it's there anyway. Give me access to that. And the Awapa mean for that attachment C, I recommended to Awapa a mean to keep it the way it is, and they both, after four months, agreed to it. So everything's staying the same, under that contract. You've got to keep off their fight for certain things.
What made them decide to give it up now? They were wrong.
I accept that. Just took them a while. It took them a while. When you deal with the federal government, it takes a long time to get things done. But it's, that was cool, and we look at that way through the end of the five-year contract, it means everything stays the same. That's where I'll beat them going tomorrow, so...
Drive safe.
Yeah.
Long day. Yep, all right, thanks.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Okay, Scott, you going to tell us about the Lake Shore Drive?
Yeah, Lon is, Lon's out hunting, so he's gone for a few days, but...
I'm sorry.
Pardon me?
What are they hunting for now?
Well, I don't know if they're hunting coyotes. Lon said he'd hunt for whatever. They're out like Wyoming or Montana.
I seen someone hunting this morning with their equipment loading it up, you know, and I thought, what the hell are they hunting for?
No, Lon wanted to hunt for something that moved.
Could still get a few more deer.
If it moves, I'm shooting.
There you go. Well, so let's take a look at this project. This is doing the south half of the Lake Shore Drive. This is completely reconstructing that. And there's several pages here that I just want to talk through with you. And so Lon and his guys, they worked, come up with a plan of how we could replace that and address the drainage concerns down there. There's a lot of drainage concerns down there. So, this first page, the one with all of the names on it, just shows the width of the pavement to be replaced and that type of stuff. So generally, this would replace everything from the intersection of the Lake Street and go replace everything up until it abuts the new pavement that was put in a couple years ago, right in back of Mayor's House. Okay, this would replace all of that. Seven inches thick. But, so that replaces the pavement. The next page, though, shows all of the other concrete work. It's actually primarily on private property, that if we're going to redo this, this street project, redo the street, you're also having to look at redoing all of this, these parking areas, approaches to garages, because the grade of the street changes so much. Okay, so every one of those boxes, then, would be replacing it. And Lon's come up with all of the quantities on that. And know that there's a lot of concerns with that, too, and especially, he had some real concerns over by Carolyn Church's house, and then real concern at Chris Wall's, Chris Wall's house. He said that it may actually, some of the concrete may actually go underneath the siding of his house, and had some real concern with how they might address that. Next page is just a short one, but this shows the drainage there. It doesn't show the concept, but this would have a new storm sewer intake there. And again, that's kind of about in the south property line of the mayor. But, and that would be where a storm drain would go. And then, the concept is that the entire road would drain to the west. So the entire, it would not have a crown on it, it would be flat, but it would be tilted, tipped to the west for drainage.
On behalf of Cornville, we used existing duct that was there, so we didn't tear that up when we went through the fire. I do believe that we do not have a lot of depth there, but also the gas is already there. So are we going to be looking at the same situation that we are, that we experienced? So are we gonna be looking at the same situation that we are, that we experienced at Sunset?
Similar, that, uh, there could certainly be the opportunity for some, uh, utility conflict through there.
So is this, then, the cement, new cement will be about, what, half of it this year, then?
The south part. This, this would propose to do the south part. Doesn't do anything for the north half of it yet at all. This would only do the south part. But the, if we flip to the next page, after that little drainage one, and look at the left-hand margin. This is a sketch that shows the, uh, curbing. And there's, there's a lot of curbing that, that's involved with this, and it actually ends up being a little, a little wall. The walls end up being about two feet tall, eight feet wide, and you see the little sketch of it over on the left-hand margin. With the idea there being that it has a spread footing underneath it, so you're not going as deep as what you would need to, otherwise be doing. The street actually sits on top of, of this spread footing. So the, the idea is to, uh, not go as deep through there, but any of, any of the dark lines in there would be this larger wall. And there's a lot of wall, there's a substantial wall there right now, too, so this, this would basically replace it in that area.
So, do we know how deep utilities are and stuff?
Not necessarily. You know, we have...
I can tell you that the electric and the fiber is not that deep in there.
The, uh, and that's why, partly why that, the placement of the, uh, of that drain was where it is. That's actually south of a, of a transformer box. So at least you're not having to cross all of those lines of, of the transformer box was, was Lon's rationale for, for putting things there. Would, could this require the, the relocation of some utilities? It could. Do we know for sure? You don't know.
It's like remodeling an old house, you just don't know what you're gonna get in it. I tell you, break this, there's always gonna be more. Just, just make sure everybody's clear that the site or the street ended at my property lane, only because the house across the street got rebuilt.
Only because you're the mayor?
It wasn't because of me, it was because of the new house.
When was the start time of this project?
Uh, unknown. This, this is just discussion right now, eh, to see if the, if the council's interested in proceeding. Because I want to show you on page thirty-three. This is the financial end of things. And you, because we'll look at all of our street expenses in, in big picture. About the two thousand seventeen street project, Sunset Drive, and then any other work. And include, this would include that Lake Shore Drive one. See the cost estimate there, uh, for Lake Shore Drive? And hopefully, this is high, but it's a hundred thousand dollars. And there is some substantial amount of work to be done, you know, with all of that curbing through there. Now, uh, things did change here a little bit today, changed for the better. I received another paid special assessment. So just, um, from the bottom, you see about four lines up where it said paid special assessments. That new total is now fifty-two thousand. And so, in total, we'd be short about twenty thousand dollars yet. If you said, yep, I want to do this, this Lake Shore Drive project, and it's gonna cost a hundred thousand dollars, we're about twenty thousand dollars short, you'd be looking at, uh, sales tax money, most likely, as a, as an alternative financing.
For bids, is that what you're doing?
Yeah. What, what I would propose is that if we want to do this, um, really, all that we would do is take these plans that we have now and coordinate a, a neighborhood meeting with, with all of the landowners or the homeowners there before we would go any further. You want them to really know what's going on. You know, it certainly impacts them for a lot of their year. Plus, we would be asking them, you know, they'll, basically, we're gonna be doing a lot of, of work on private land.
But there's been a problem with drainage down there, and this is to benefit all those people.
Oh, it's, it's a huge benefit for them, absolutely.
It's bad enough they've been up here more than once, I believe.
Well, that's it. We've been, we've had this on the table here for at least two years, that I know of.
I'd say set up a meeting with them, go from where, where on, to what's actual.
I imagine they'll put more pressure being Lake Shore, on the other side, uh, you know.
Sunset.
Sunset, I mean, yeah. So that got done, so I would say they might put a little more pressure on that.
Maybe, they, yeah, I guess, we always have an answer for that, that Sunset Drive paid for themselves.
That's right.
Well, maybe that's what they want to, you know.
Both, all, all the work and bill's gone, but I guess I would look at, we also want to work with the utilities here, and we need a clear, this time, a clear recommendation of how much elevation is gonna change on this.
They shot that the other day, didn't they?
We went from Sunset Drive to being sixteen inches, all of a sudden, to thirty-two.
Sure. And we, we have some shots, Bill, and if you can sit down with, with Lon and kind of go through shots on it. Because, of course, the, the elevation doesn't change dramatically, because you're meeting up with that existing pavement.
Correct.
We're just gonna tip it on the west side.
Make sure we don't have the same problem again.
We're hoping not.
What's your problem solver, I can tell. Did you buy stock in Black Bobbit? I sampled a few.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna now.
Yeah, all right.
All right, thanks.
You'll line that up?
We will set up a community, a neighborhood meeting.
Make sure everybody's in line.
Yeah. Okay, we have, uh, one person, one for the building inspector.
Yeah, Kyle Leonard has, has applied for building inspector position. I met with Kyle. He certainly seems, uh, very, uh, very interested in, eh, Kyle is, uh, well, well able to handle the...
How's he gonna do that with?
After hours, you know. So all of the paperwork is done through email, and then he would just be doing his inspections after hours.
Well, that's maybe the same rate that you paid, you know?
Yeah. It's forty dollars per application.
Okay, we'll need a motion to hire Mr. Leonard's.
I'll second.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Okay, Moller.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Waltman.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
And we have one applicant for the PNZ board.
Uh, Linda Drilling, and this would fill the unexpired term of Darryl H. I. It goes till June thirtieth of twenty twenty.
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Moller.
Yes.
Waltman.
Yes.
Stankin. Reese.
Yes.
Okay, and I know you want to review this accountant's report.
Sure.
You probably want to review it.
Sure.
Did you see that anticipation on your face?
Sure. It's like reading a book, you always move to the end first.
Well, you do go to the end.
The end's not that far.
Because it's, you know, well, gonna be about five pages from the back, I would guess. So, and it is page number eight. So, a- again, the idea here is, is that this is, uh, an annual exam, and it's more of an exam of your process. And they're, they're taking a look, some at, at the finances, and, and they're doing checks on, on, uh, again, the process about how things are done. But, uh, but it's not a financial audit, okay? They didn't come audit the books. It, it's, uh, what the state calls agreed-upon procedures. So let's go through these, these recommendations that are on page eight. And the first one deals with segregation of duties. We hear segregation of duties every time, um, when, when we're audited or through these agreed-upon procedures, because there's only two of us in the office. And, you know, we do basically have some specialties that we take care of, like Kay takes care of the receivables. And, and she really does take care of virtually all of the receivables, and I take care of, of most of the payroll stuff. And, and a lot of times, there's not a, a easy opportunity for working back and forth to, uh, to look at the segregation of duties and double checks. So, some of the things that were suggested there deal with, with the utilization of elected officials. And we're trying to get the mayor involved in that a little bit, as far as maybe picking up bank statements, and to give a, a cursory view of, of some of that information. So we'll can, we'll continue to, uh, try to work on some of those things. And then also periodically doing these random cross-checks. And we've, you know, truthfully, we tried some of them last year and worked for a little while, and then it got dropped. And it's just, uh, it would be ma, making that a matter of priority in order to, to know that that happens.
Sounds like we need to do it, because this, this is the second time we've ordered that.
Yeah, you know, and it's, uh, like you say, it's an annual ding, because we're really limited in the amount of segregation that we can do with only two people.
Yeah, but if we add a... We can always add somebody, like they said.
Yeah, change the process. If you don't change the process, doesn't consider that you, that'll bring more attention to us than anything else. So I think what you, what you thought you dropped, I think you just gotta make that a priority. Like I said, the only ones you're protected is you and Kay, basically.
Sure.
They did say that, but that's, that's what it's about.
It just looks like, you know, as they say in here, um, better transparency. You know, when, when, you, you know, as far as taking all these recommendations that they have here, that's all being part of being more transparent, and, and those are all good suggestions, if that sounds like. And we, like Whitey said, we do need to make that a priority.
On, uh, B, talking about those city expenses, they had found a couple of expenses that were approved by the council for expenditure, and they were paid out of one fund. And then, what we did is changed the fund and paid them out of something different. What they're, they were to Hancock and Hallitz. And like they had been approved and be paid out of road use tax fund, and we changed that to a project fund. You know, when, when we turned around and wrote the check, so, um, it's, uh, they, like you say, they were, they were approved expenses. We just changed the fund from which they came out, and that's what that note is about. And, um, that was something new. We'd never, never seen that before, um, because it certainly doesn't happen, you know. If we would notice that, that something was misclassified, we would, we would change that, though. Bank reconciliations. Their, their point here is that they are, they're looking for a detailed listing of, of outstanding items. We run a, a cash report, and the computer does so much stuff for us anymore. It just tells you what the outstanding items are. And you can plug in that, that total of, of the outstanding items, and you may, you need to go in further into the system to come up with what the detail is. Otherwise, you, you, you just plug in what the outstanding items are, and, uh, and it, and it balances. They just want to make sure that the outstanding list that you're printing is the same as what you're using for the, uh, the amount off the cash report. Yes, you know, it, you gotta go in there and, and print another report in order for that to happen. Uh, city council meeting reports in D, that, uh, you know, we give you the monthly cash report, and we want to make sure that we always give you that month-end compared-to-budget report. And that was a recommendation last time, too. And then she came and checked to make sure that that happened. And we've been real good about that, but then we forgot a month. And then, you know, she, she saw this month that, that we hadn't done, so it's a recommendation again. But what we're talking about here, and this in your, in your council packet, in this, this case, it's on page forty-one, forty-one, forty-two, where for each one of the funds, you're, it's just giving you an update of where you are on budgeted items. So it's, it's pretty easy that you can take a look at the, at the police, police and fire, and then you go over, and if nothing else, you can see the percent expended, and you know that you're half of the way through the year, so you're pretty close on police and fire. It, it's just a, a little running, um, uh, view about where you are as far as, uh, sitting to budget numbers.
So this is just more consistency with making sure that that's being done?
Yes, yep.
Require these procedural, right?
Yes. Um, the number, letter E, though, talks about payroll tax deposits. There'd been a change along the way about timing of filing payroll tax deposits. Our payroll date is a Wednesday, and payroll taxes need to be filed then by Friday. Okay, so, and I have done this several times, that, and it turns around, you gotta, gotta file them right away. But I've filed two or three times on Friday, okay? And they can't withdraw money until Monday, and they've considered that delinquent. Okay, now, uh, that had happened as the auditor was reviewing. It happened one other time since then, and we were penalized for it. And I asked them to waive penalty on it and everything. They would not waive penalty, because it had happened previously. Penalty's two hundred and eighty-four dollars. Um, so anyway, that had, that had been paid.
So that's just another procedure, too, that you just have to make sure.
Yeah, I mean, we, we pay on, we pay payroll on Wednesday and turn around and pay taxes on Wednesday.
Yeah, that's what I do, too.
Business transactions, they have to record any of the transactions of affiliated, uh, people. And in this case, you can see, uh, we had a large transaction with Jerry, uh, but it had been bid, and everything's fine on that, and then the other ones are generally small. That, um, you can have business transactions with, with, uh, people with whom you have a, some sort of business relationship, up to twenty-five hundred dollars. You know, if it's over twenty-five hundred dollars, needs to be competitively bid. And the last one on page ten talks about city council meeting notices. And of course, we post city council agendas always at least twenty-four hours in advance. This note says, post them, write on them what time you've posted them, and keep that in a binder, so that you can always go back and find out when you've posted them. And we've, we're always real good about posting them in a timely manner. They just need to keep them in a binder as far as, as what time they were posted.
Sounds like you've got some procedural issues you gotta push through.
Yeah, yes, I've been working on the agenda stuff already.
Most of it gets done with the computer anyway, right?
Well, that's just it. I mean, it can be so easy with the computer, that sometimes you gotta take the next couple steps.
You know, they're gonna get in run time.
For, I guess, but, oh, on the taxes and stuff, yeah, you know.
Anymore. All it takes is five or six days to get seven, to get it there, you know, really.
True, yeah, that's true.
And again, you know, I'd like to see you make these a priority, so we don't see them again next time, like we see every year, you know.
And like you said, it's taking that step.
We could certainly make those improvements, Dave, but I'm not gonna tell you, especially that segregation of duties. We can never meet the, the legal requirement of segregation of duties. It will be there year to year to year, because there's only two people.
Well, you know, maybe we should look at maybe another elected official, like the mayor, you know.
And we can get the mayor involved.
Be more involved and, and more, more, um, in that process, and we'll give him an extra ten dollars a month to do that.
Sweet.
I just thought more of a daddy boy.
Okay, I, yeah, I agree. But, you know, I, I think, I think that's really important, you know, to show, uh, the transparency.
Sure.
But the same, we've had that since, hell, back when I was on the council, we had that same issue every time.
It's, it's tough when you don't have a lot of staff.
But it sounds like it's a fixable, a fixable thing.
Some things.
Yeah, it's, it's kind of addressable, to where it's, it's not, you, that you can make some improvements to be better. It, it won't be fixed, you know. It, the accounting standard on segregation of duties is hard to, hard to match, you know. That's having, lots of times, having a couple of people do the work, and...
Checks and balances.
It's really bad if you got a town that has one person.
Sure.
They get good, too.
Yeah, but, yeah, so you, you hear about all of the, uh, embellishment and stuff that, and you hear about that more and more from these small towns now. Well, this is why, this, all the small towns gotta have this done now. And, and this had changed, I don't know, let's say, five years ago, that they started to get in, involved with the process like this, because a lot of small towns never got audited. And now, at least, they come up like once every four years, something like that. Their, their name comes around in, in the, uh, the auditor, state auditor might come looking at you, so... We do ours every year, because our, our budget is large enough that it, that it dictates that we have one of these every year. Whereas, like Sac City, their budget must be, oh, no, their population was a little larger, over two thousand, and then they're, uh, subject to audit every year, instead of the, these agreed-upon procedures.
Look, something to work on.
Yeah, I have a motion to re- Yeah, I have a motion to receive the report.
So we'll second.
I'll second.
We'll call.
Holtman.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna advertise for some employees again.
Yeah, let's take a look at, at that list. And the, the list would be basically, I think, what, what we've done in the past. We're not proposing any, any changes necessarily. I'm on page four. Four campground attendants. And base wage on that yet is still eight dollars. Um, as we continue to hire a lot of the folks back, they historically have gotten a twenty-five cent an hour increase over the years. So um, not very many of them make eight dollars an hour, you know, a lot of them make nine and ten dollars an hour. One mini golf and concession helper. We hired, we tried to hire a person last year and never really did. And we had a uh, a campground attendant help out with the uh, with the mini golf cleaning. We really wanted to try to get somebody on board who can, who can be devoted to do that. Because that basically is, say it's an hour and a half, two hours every day. And they come down and, and clean off the mini golf course and then they, they uh, devote some of their time then to basically taking care of our gardens around town. And they may be uptown uh, weeding the bump outs, that type of stuff. One summer parks worker, and this is just oftentimes a high school or, or uh, or college age person. And then two utility floaters and we're, be at eleven dollars on utility floaters. And last year Cameron was a utility floater, my boy Jamie was a utility floater. I don't think either one of them is gonna be back. And we will be on the hunt for a couple of new utility floaters and they gotta be eighteen years old to be a, to be a utility floater. And that is problematic. We've, we've had some recruitment issues with that too. I think both Eric and Mike, I know both Eric and Mike plan to return. They've both put in their, their applications again. And then one work harvester operator is really similar to what we did this year. We've hired several. And means that, that not a, they didn't get lots of hours and, and um, at least one of them would have loved to have been basically a full-time operator. But that, when we had lots of operators, it uh, just made for a, a lot of flexibility in how things scheduled, so. Um, I guess that's where I'd like to be as far as positions and then base wages. And if we could have just uh, run that past you, make sure we can go ahead and advertise for that then.
Any motion on that?
Sure.
Second.
We'll call.
Okay, Stankin.
Yes.
Holtman.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
You know anybody up to school, Dave, that we really need to be?
I could check, check with Amanda and.
Need to be working on that. Those utility floater ones are tough because you gotta be eighteen, but if there's some seniors, especially any, anybody who wants to be in. Any type of utili- utility field would be great.
Right.
Or even if it's working with your hands, contracting, anything like that, I think that'd be great.
So you're still gonna have one for the park?
Yep, one for the parks.
I don't know, Tanner, I don't know. We're hoping he does. I mean, need to talk to him. I told him I didn't know when this happened, so.
The uh, proposed due date is February twenty-fourth. Turn around and get people hired right away and summer will be here before you know it.
Oh yeah, I hope so.
Okay, budget preparation.
Yeah, just going through some, some prep stuff for you. Start on page thirty-four. This just uh, really FYI about taxable valuations in SAC County, but ours is highlighted about what the. Taxable valuation of Lakeview is now, so for this upcoming budget year, sixty-nine point three million dollars. And that's a, just about a two point, uh, a two million dollar increase over, over what it was the previous years. So it's up three point oh one percent um, in total. And you, that just gives you a little comparison about the other communities in the county. You see that, you know, we're by a substantial margin now, we're the highest uh, we have the highest taxable valuation in the county. But using that taxable valuation amount, then we can look at the property tax analysis that's on the next page. And this uh, this analysis then is just prepared, assumes that we have the same total tax levy that we've, we've now had for, I think, ten years. At eight dollars and forty-five cents per thousand. Okay, so what this does is goes through the assessed valuation, the taxable valuation. Let's just kinda walk down that. Because the assessed valuation, that's total valuation of everything, um, at a hundred percent values. You can see that for the current year, it was a hundred and twenty-one million, ne- uh, this upcoming budget year, a hundred and twenty-two point nine million dollars. Taxable valuation though, this year sixty-seven point three million, it's sixty-nine point three next year, largely because of that next number, that residential rollback. So for all the residential property, you know, if they're assessed at a hundred percent, in total a hundred percent, and then you know what their taxable value? In this case, it's fifty-six point nine percent of that. The rollback went up by one point three percent. So you looked at the previous page and said, our, our valuation went up three point one percent. Rollback accounts for about one point three percent of that. Okay, so our, our total valuation growth wasn't that high. It has a lot to do with rollback. Commercial and industrial, that is now at ninety percent and, and that's where that will remain. But this multifamily residential, that goes down three point seven five percent every, every year until it gets to be the same rollback as residential. So that one will continue to drop over time and, you know, so we got a, a few apartment complexes in town. Of course, that applies to that. The other big thing that multifamily applies to is the nursing home. So then, and that is, you know, a pretty substantial valuation, so that continues to, to roll back every year. Total tax levy is eight dollars and forty-five cents and we just split that amongst the general fund or the total amount of money that is needed for debt service. Now, the only debt service that we have is that street bond now. Okay, take a look at. You know, let's flip to page thirty-seven. Because this, this is a proposal on that street bond. Remember this time last year, you know, we had every intention that we were gonna do, do the project during sixteen. We held a public hearing on issuing that, that million dollars debt. And then we levied taxes to start paying that back. Okay, of course, we never did issue the debt yet, but we have received the taxes then for this year. About eighty-eight thousand dollars worth of taxes. The proposal here would be that we would have another eighty-eight thousand dollars worth of tax asking for this year. We do a lot of things with property taxes, um, just out of the sake of consistency, that we, just consistent in the way that we levy taxes and it doesn't change. Um, so this debt schedule that we're showing on page thirty-seven then basically has us making a double principal payment in the first year. Okay, so it is, is using the money that we have, let's turn around and get that paid right away. So let's take a look at the rest of our debts then, and that's on page thirty-six. And this is showing that we would, would issue that, the streets, general obligation at a million dollars. We don't know what the interest rate's gonna be. This just uh, penciled it in there at two and a half and it will likely be somewhere between two and two and a half. That is that street debt though, that's the only one that we pay with property taxes. The remainder of these are all paid through some other manner. Um, I put the big box around fire truck general obligation because that's the last time this, this budget year that we're budgeting is the last payment on that fire truck. Um, and that's why the fire truck, or the fire department, I'm sure will be talking about having another fire truck here before too long. Uh, the boulders tiff. You can see that, if you follow that across, you can see the amount outstanding at the end of, of June of this year, we'll have a hundred and two thousand dollars outstanding. And we continue to pay that off next year, about twenty-two thousand dollars. We pay for those things with different types of, of revenue. And for that boulders one, we pay with hotel motel revenue and tiff revenue. So there's no traditional property taxes that go into that. The SAC beach general obligation is, is again out there by boulders, but that's the one that basically paid to have the street go from boulders north to the highway. And that is largely paid through a special assessment with boulders. They pay, you know, tot- totaled debt service next year's twenty-two thousand, their special assessment was about fifteen. And the remainder of that then is paid with uh, tiff money then also. Then we have our revenue bonds. The electric revenue, in December of two thousand twelve, we issued four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. See that at the end of, of June this year, we'd still have two hundred and eighty thousand dollars, so that's outstanding. Would continue to pay off forty-five thousand dollars a year. So just that the electric, water, sewer debts, these are all paid only by the revenues to the utilities. So electric revenue debt is paid only by electric revenues. But as we think about future projects in the electric utility, just know that we have this bond out there that won't be paid off until June of twenty twenty-three. Sewer SRF, that's uh, we're actually getting that baby whittled down. Last payment is in June of, of twenty twenty. So that we can turn around and have another twenty years on the lagoons here shortly. And the water SRF, we continue to pay on that too with the final uh, payment date on that being June of twenty twenty-one. Little.
Water, that's a to- water tower, right?
That, no, that's the water plant. We're still, still paying on the water plant.
Oh, okay.
Okay, little bit on the water tower though. You see this, the smaller print there below the big graph. We got a couple of internal debts. We're paying ourselves back ten thousand dollars a year. Um, we pay from the sewer fund to the sales tax fund. Um, then when we purchased the sewer jetter. And we're down to the last couple of payments on that. And then also down the last couple of payments on uh, on the water tower. Where we pay from the water utility to the uh, electric improvement fund, I think, is, is where the, we borrowed that last money. And just the last little note there talks about a constitutional debt limit. Um, cities can have debt equal to five percent of their total assessed values. So five percent of our total would be six point one million dollars. And as of six thirty of seventeen, would, we would anticipate having one point two million dollars. Of course, most of that is that street bond. So we'd be about twenty percent of our, of our debt service limit. Doing fine. Page thirty-eight is just a little recap on insurance. Another, another big cost for us as far as property and auto and liability insurance and work comp and then health insurance. Uh, so good news on, on our property coverage. There is no base or valuation increase that's, that is expected for this year. Um, budgeted a two percent, that's the, just kind of a, just because, but we would anticipate no substantial change in the uh, in the property or the auto or liability part of it. It's about fifty-nine thousand dollars is what we pay. Work comp. Uh, we, for the past several years, have managed to whittle down our modification factor and it was looking really good. Now, when we've had a couple of claims that are now two and three years old and they're just hitting the books now. Okay, with the big one being, remember when Brian Sorenson did his uh, arm bicep thing? You know, so that, that's a large claim that, that hits us this year. You're gonna see our modification factor go up. Plus it, work comp fees just go up equal to the amount of, of wage increase also, so. This just ballparks then a total of fifteen percent uh, work comp increase and be about seventeen thousand dollars of, of work comp cost. And for, for the uh, health insurance. Then the big box there is broke down between, uh, it's actually six months at the current rate that we know about. And then would have six month at a proposed rate that we don't know about, but the proposed rate again is twenty percent. Is, is what I used for a, for a number just for budgeting purposes. So we've seen, of course, these increases over the past couple of years. We also have seen this year especially substantially higher utilization of partial self-funding. So that number is um, twelve thousand, over twelve thousand dollars, direct payments on partial self-funding this year too, so it's gone up. But in, so in total, you can see what our current insurance costs are, about two hundred and two thousand and, and the budget for next year would propose to be about two forty-seven. Questions, comments?
The fat dog camera though, when you sent around, is that you have not bought that yet?
No, we haven't done anything with it yet.
Oh.
We were um, discussing that as a budget item for next year. The mayor's been doing a little bit of checking with, with Clyde on that about pricing and.
Well, I was thinking there too, we should, you know, um, Jeremy or Cornbell both can do that stuff.
Maybe so.
You know.
No, just the idea is that if we, if we wanted to.
Right.
Go ahead and, and get it started here, we sure could, but.
Another thing to keep in county or in town, you know, if you can, you know.
Yeah, Clyde's a, Clyde's a seasonal resident.
I know that. I know.
A very generous one.
Yes.
Well, and that's okay, but still it's nice to have a dude.
Sure, yeah, no, that was just, I guess, more informational and see where we're at, but uh, but we could sure talk with Jeremy and see if he can do anything with us.
The city clerk report?
Um, yep, just uh, just a couple of things. Well, we, we get together next Monday night for a planning session. I guess, I didn't, didn't plan on going through, you know, uh. You know, the traditional goal setting and we'd prioritize projects and go through those worksheets like we've done in the past and stuff. You know, I thought we would just have project discussion. And because if you start to list all of the projects that we could potentially have going on, there's a lot of stuff going on. And we need to uh, just have some discussion on those, on those projects and uh, kinda be prioritizing about, about how they, how they kinda lay out and, and where the money can go for that. But uh, one of the things that, that'll come up during that discussion, you know, I wanna talk more about, about Bobby Terrell and the, and his uh, development out there. But I was talking with, with Dorothy Lanfair about that annexation issue yet and just sent her those plans of Bobby's two weeks ago. And then got ahold of her today and, and talked about it and. She just said, I will get you a written response on that and that's kinda where we're at right now. And it, you know, I would like to urge things along a little bit, but it just doesn't seem like it's moving quickly.
Isn't it kinda their advantage to be annexed into the?
Uh, I mean, there's good and bad points, you know. It's, if, if they would ever look at development, of course, it, it would be needed, but I don't know that that's in their plans at all, so.
So their county, their taxes go right to the county then, is that how that works?
Yeah, if they're in the county right now, of course, they, they don't pay city taxes. Um, but the unique thing about that is that if, if you have ag land within the city limits, your taxes, it's actually just a little bit lower. So. Uh, other than that, Lakeview hosts Northwest Iowa League on Thursday. Out of Ryans again, if, if anybody is able to attend, that'd be terrific. Um, this one's the one that's, that's earlier. Social time starts at five. Dinner's at six though, so if you can still make a six o'clock dinner, that's.
That's it, um, six o'clock.
Yep.
I can't be there?
I don't know, have to see about the weather.
Sure, yeah.
I'll have to see what my schedule is, but put me down for now and I'll contact you if I can.
Okay.
You get a good turnout for them?
Yeah, depends on the weather this time.
Yeah, it's, yeah, this time. It's, yeah, this time of year, it depends a lot on the weather.
Yeah.
On everything, I think.
It's nice that it's close.
Yeah, we kinda did that on purpose. We're gonna, we're gonna have a meeting. We're gonna have it in January.
Close to here. Okay, we need a motion going to close session.
I'll make a motion.
Second. We'll call.
Moller?
Yes.
Stankin?
Yes.
Holtman?
Yep.
Reese?
Yes.
Shut the doors on the way out. All right.